There probably is a very good list of specific measurable outcomes. They're not here, and so I'm very concerned about voting and approving this expenditure without those included.
Mr. McMartin.
Mayor Alderman Evans, Alderwoman Evans, I'm sorry. Those, the report that we gave in December contained a lot of those key measurables that we were asked to do moving forward, talking about the number, and in the case of COVID, yeah, we got shot in the arm, literally. But there weren't, there were some trade shows early on, but not very many. There wasn't, people weren't traveling. One of the reasons the port perhaps didn't get started sooner than October was because of lack of travel because of COVID. We deal with site selectors, as I've said, from people calling in. We'll make reports on those. The B R and E, Business Retention and Expansion Program that we run where we go out and we interview businesses to find out what they're thinking about the marketplace, and we share those results with our board. The mayor sits on that. We share, I would be more than happy to share those results with Harold. We put those into, it's, it would be kind of like answering questions for the census. We put it into a report that will give you an image of what the business community is thinking about, but not enough of an image that you could say, oh, that's Joe's cabins that responded to that particular response. We don't want to go there, and we won't get the information from the businesses if we don't. The...
But having specifics, like, you know, we talk a lot about the port. There is not no, any mention of a measurable outcome for, like, what, you know, your goals and, you know, are for the port, you know? And I know you have them, right? And they're there, but it would be, like, very good to have those contained in this. Like, we, these are our plans for, you know, port development in the next 12 months with this money. These are ideas for, you know, that, they're there. You have them in your staff. You're doing them.
Yes.
But, you know, having them in this document, you know, in the contract the city signs with you would be really, really helpful because it's all in one place, and we know then, like, okay, we have a clear sense of, you know, how this money will work to do X, Y, and Z with the port, and do this with this project, and this with this project, and just having it all solidified into one instead of, you know, like, hearing from you, like, this is what we plan to do with the port, great, but, like, you know, I would love for it to be in here.
Mr. McMartin, I might try to discuss enough from the layman's terms because I'm not a trained economic development specialist, but as, as I've sat through Service Basin Planning Council and then on M A D C's board and now on the combined board, what I've found with economic development, having those measurables and out there to say, okay, here's exactly what we're going to do with the port, sometimes showing your hand is not an option, saying exactly, here's who we're working with and here's what we're going to achieve this year. Typically, those things don't happen until they happen, and then everybody knows...
But that's not what I'm talking, Mr. Mayor. I am talking about...
Ms. Alderwoman Evans, I don't like to be talked over, and I certainly won't talk over you either. When it comes to economic development, a lot of these issues stay behind the scenes until they come out, which is why you have the quasi-arm with M A D C and why the same happens with Bismarck Mandan's process. And the measurables with a lot of those functionalities are there with the site selector, or not the site selector visits, but the bear, bear visits and the expansion and retention. And I'm sure Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Stewart, Mr. McMartin, and a number of other people that live in this world could probably explain it a lot better than I, but when, when we talk about what's been delivered, take a look at the successes, take a look at what has, has been delivered and what is coming. The state legislature is weighing in on what's coming this legislative session with the port. That's the best way I can explain it. Alderwoman Evans.
And I wasn't asking for trade secrets, asking for, you know, we're going to try and get three new companies using the intermodal facility, you know, like, things like that. I don't need trade secrets. The public doesn't need trade secrets. But like, what are, you know, what are the, the big goals? Like, I don't even know what the goals for the, the, the port are for 20, you know, 21 specifically. I don't need details, but, you know, like, we'd like to do this. We would like to solidify the agreement we have with the operator, you know, that kind of stuff. Those aren't secrets, you know? And so that's what I'm talking about, not asking Mr. McMartin to disclose things that would harm us strategically.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. City Manager.
If I may, for a minute, address maybe some of Alderwoman Evans' concerns. I agree fully that there needs to be accountability and transparency with regards to these public funds, and I've communicated that to Mr. McMartin and several of his board members that have also met with me as we, as we talked over this discussion. But at the same time, I can't speak fully to how economic development has been done previous to now and what the relationship between the city and M A C E D C has been up to this point. What I can speak to is my experience in where we need to get to. And, and we'll be talking about this more fully here over the coming months. In fact, I'll be asking the council to have a work session in May to talk specifically about economic development and my viewpoints of what I've observed over the last few months I have been here and what I see as the strengths and the weaknesses and, and where we need to get to as far as a game plan. But one of the key pieces here is you have a, a recent combination of the Minot Area Chamber and the Economic Development Corporation, and they're still trying to figure out what that looks like and what their goals and priorities are, but more specifically as a community, as a partnership of many players that help spur the economic vitality of the community. While you've had some bits and pieces here, such as the I E D C study and some of those types of things, there isn't really a good comprehensive economic development strategic plan for this community. And without that in place, it's hard to really determine what the measurables are. So one, do we not, do we not know what the strategic economic plan is for the community as a whole? We also don't understand what the role is going to be of M A C E D C going forward. And without understanding that role, it's hard to develop what those measurements are. And so I view this as a nine-month contract that gives us some time to have some of those community conversations, put those pieces in play, and then the next contract will be negotiated to reflect what M A C E D C is willing to do and how we measure that and put that accountability in place. And so I would agree with Alderwoman Evans that that is exactly where I would like to get to eventually, but I don't know if the timing is ready for us yet because we still have some really big issues to figure out going forward as a community and as their organization going forward. And I guess I'm respectfully asking for some time for us to work together and figure that out. So far, in my communications with M A C E D C, they've been very willing to listen to my ideas and my vision and, and understanding that and how we get there, and LOIS being a good example of that, as well as some other pieces that are also going to have some financial commitment from them as well that they see going forward. And so I would like to get to that point, but we have some, we have some big picture items that I think we need to get in place before we're ready for that level of detail.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. So can I get a clarification on the LOIS system? Is that, is that a required measurable this year, or is it a consideration for M A D C?
So it is currently in the contract, Alderman Pittner. It is currently in the contract, and they have a responsibility through this contract to deliver on 75% of the existing buildings and sites within Minot to be ready to be inputted into that system by December 31st. Basically, we anticipate it takes about a year to get all that up and done, and this is a nine-month contract which represents 75% of that timeframe, and so we're asking for 75% of that to be delivered by the end of the year.
Continue.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, I don't know how best to go about this, if it would be an amendment to the agreement, just as far as the city considering additional funding, maybe with some of the cost savings from last year, the M A D C can foot that bill as far as a LOIS subscription versus the city having to go above and beyond their contribution? And I guess I'll provide that in a, in an amendment to this agreement, that the city will not contribute anything above and beyond the 328 prorated to this date.
Motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Evans. Discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Pittner.
My thinking is that if there was some cost savings, I mean, $4,500 isn't going to break the bank on an annual subscription. I, I don't see why we have to further burden taxpayers above and beyond that, that dollar amount.
Mr. McMartin, do you feel that there's reserves or money savings, or what is the financial situation of that? And I, I know you're not prepared to sit here and talk deep budget, but off the cuff, I know that this was a deep discussion within the Board of Directors.
The city, the city manager and I spoke late this afternoon, and I was aware of what the LOIS yearly fee was going to be. It was my intention, and it makes it sound way too easy since Alderman Pittner has made the motion, but it was my intention to go back to the board and suggest that we, in fact, needed to find the dollars internally for that. So I'm, I'm not going to stand here and object to your motion. I think to Alderwoman Evans' comments, I think as I've stood here and thought about things, there, there are a whole bunch of things that we do, we just take for granted.
All right.
And, you know, for instance, the Magic Fund report, or not the Magic Fund reports, but we've got this ongoing conversation with C T E, okay? There's an attorney involved that pulls together the contract that ultimately is approved by, that Kelly works with, and we pay his bill. And we do that for all of the projects, most, almost every project that goes through the Magic Fund. So, and we don't, we don't talk about that. We didn't talk about that in our annual reports. So there's a sum of money there that doesn't stay with M A C E D C. And, and I think we can provide some additional reporting as we move through the year. But, and, and to your, to your comment, you know, find three new businesses to put in the, in the, on the industrial sites. If, if, I couldn't in good faith do that. I'm going to do my damnedest to find those three new businesses, but I can't commit to that because I don't know if I'm going to find those businesses that want to relocate to Minot, North Dakota. That's, that's been the challenge, and that's been the churn or the change in economic development over the years. I mean, if you go back, at one time, we almost had a cluster of call centers.
Right.
And the cluster of call centers almost created a new, a new field of study within the university, trying to get into call center management and a whole variety of other things. And as the call centers started shifting offshore, things changed. You know, thank God, we, the one call center, maybe as a gift for $10 is going to, that, that's going to the school system, is probably a good deal. I mean, Magic Fund helped get the original, the original company there that ultimately Cognizant bought. But that was a community investment, and it's provided jobs for a long time, and now it's providing some infrastructure back to the community, a nice full circle thing. So, yes, I can come up with, I can come up with stats.
And perhaps it wouldn't be like getting three new businesses, but like, you know, we plan to do outreach to five businesses in 2021 to discuss, you know, like, that's doable, whether or not you can do, you know, whether that actually happens, that they move to Minot is not in, you know, but, you know, the, the chamber can try, right? Like, saying we're going to have five contacts with...
And some, and some of those are going to come from site selectors that reach out to us.
Exactly, right, right, right. So I think it's just like Mr. Stewart said, you know, like, I'm confident, you know, with Mr. Stewart on board now and him, you know, talking more about sort of the strategic planning and stuff, I know that is integral to being able to provide measurable outcomes. So I look forward, forward to that, and definitely, you know, next year at this time, you know, you know, would expect a completely different kind of proposal that has those, you know, things in once, you know, we sort of, you all figure out who you are and what you want to be when you grow up, so.
I don't want to grow up.
[laughing].
Mr. Connect, I believe, do you have something on behalf of the board, if you want to step to the podium?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name's John Connect. I'm the new chair of the M A C E D C. To their point, we are brand new. We're four months old. We merged two large organizations. That is an undertaking. I've been involved in my banking career with a lot of acquisitions, and that's not always easy. To your point, I think you had a, a great question as to, you know, our initiatives. And we adopted those just recently at, at our board meeting. We have 11 strategic initiatives for the year. Some of them will not be finished this year because they are very long projects, one of those being the port. We've already been working on that for two years prior to the organization's merging. Another one, for example, is simply getting our books merged together and completing our budget. We are about ready to present that to our board as well. Certainly, in our infancy, we will get to a point of larger-scale strategic planning. We will need to do that. But, yeah, we have adopted 11 strategic initiatives that our board and organization is working on. We have a very active volunteer board. I'm very proud of the work that they do. They give tons of their time to huge efforts like the port. That is a, a huge undertaking. I think it's going to be a gateway to an opportunity, not only for Minot, but for the state as a whole. We have the entire industrial park that, that, that is the gate to that industrial park. If we could bring more A G T-type companies into that park, the employment is unbelievable. The tax base that we create is unbelievable. Those are all things in our vision. But, again, we're, we're four months. We're organizing. We appreciate all the support that the city has given us all these years. I will state this because I think we are good stewards of the money. 10 years ago, we were at actually a higher funding level than we are today. So we are doing more with less, and I think we're doing more with less even with our staff. I think it's made, made us leaner and meaner by pulling the two organizations together. I'll stop there because I don't want to spend all night talking to you because I'm probably not that fun to hear, but if you have other questions for me, I'd even be glad to share those initiatives with you. It's, it's our, your plan. We, we do have that in place. But again, we're a young organization from two former organizations, and we're hitting the ground running.
Any questions for Mr. Connect? Alderman Padagula.
Just a comment. I think part of the differences that are coming out here are natural and normal and healthy ones. Part of the reason I'm willing to cut John and your new organization some slack is I've talked with John for 30 years, except for Mark here. I don't think anybody's been as, as involved over as long a period of time as I have on the council with economic development activities. And I realize that it takes some time to get things up and going, and it's going to be that way because of this merger, which I think is outstanding. The point I want to make, first of all, is I think the council historically has changed significantly. And in this last council and the current council, I think we are very much more committed to economic development, and we're putting our money where our mouth is, our taxpayers, our citizens' money, in creating these new positions, Mr. Rosenthal's position, I think with Mr. Stewart, one of the things we were looking for was economic development background. We've discovered that Mr. Zakian has a great deal of background. I have to thank him for getting I E D C here. But I think you're right. We do need to have a better sense of our working relationship and a better sense of strategy, and I think that's where I'm coming back to what Harold was saying. I'm willing to cut us, cut the organization some slack now because I think it's going to take some time, and I don't think we can have the kinds of specifics that Carrie wants, which I agree with very much. I think we do need to have that strategic planning, that talking together, you know, specifically probably a day-long retreat where the economic development and the city leaders get together and talk about this stuff and hash it out. Too bad we can't do it privately, and that's been one of the advantages of having been able to talk with John and other people, like in your position, in the past, and, and Sean is privy to those kinds of discussions. So it's, it's a balancing act between giving you the kind of authority and autonomy that you need to run your, run your business of getting us business and the accountability that Carrie very much is talking about. And I think, if I could see Tom, I think he probably would be shaking his head, too. In the past, I think the three of us, the newly elected people on council have really, I think, all of us emphasized the need for accountability. So my, my thought would be that I, I, I'm willing to give you the $4,500 bucks. I, I think that's a, that's a small investment, but what I want to focus on is the process of us starting to talk together, to think together, to plan together, to keep growing. I mean, today, like I said before, we've seen some really good little specks of, of hopefulness and, and innovation that we didn't have before, and I know that we kind of stand on the shoulders of the people that came before us. And so I'm, I'm very much looking forward to it, but I think, again, the, the key thing is sitting down, talking with each other, thinking about it, making those plans, and then getting them to that level of specificity that, that Carrie is talking about because we need to get there. You know, you and I may know, and John and she may know, but we have to be concerned about the average citizen. You have your members. I don't know how many hundreds there are. We have 50,000 people we're responsible to, and sometimes what we take for granted, like John was saying, other people don't even know about, and we need to make sure we educate them. And part of our responsibility, I think, as elected officials, is to answer questions, educate, and, and engage with people that you may not have the responsibility for. You, you owe it to your members. We owe it to the community, the citizens at large. So that's one of those differences. So I'm very much looking forward to the dialogue, and I, I'm happy to see the merger. I'm happy to see the, the bits of innovation we're seeing even tonight, and I, I hope this is the start of a process, and I'm very much looking forward to what Harold, you know, has to share with us when, when we have that meeting.
Any other questions for Mr. Connect? Alderwoman Evans.
So we still have to vote on Alderman Pittner's amendment, but I would like to make a motion for an amendment to add those 11 strategic initiatives into the, the agreement, you know?
I'd second that.
If, yeah.
I think we have to act on the amendment before we can amend the amendment. So we'll pause that. Any other questions for Mr. Connect before we get to the amendment? Thank you, Mr. Connect.
Thank you.
The motion is to amend, the motion is to amend the main motion to have the funding for LOIS not come separately from the contract. Any discuss, any final discussion on the motion to amend? Last call for discussion. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yep.
Padagula?
No.
Ross?
No.
Sitma?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Motion to amend fails. Alderwoman Evans.
So I'd just like to make a motion to add the 11 strategic initiatives that have been come up with by the board into the, the agreement.
Second that.
Motion by Alderwoman Evans, second by Alderman Padagula. Discussion on the motion. Yes, Mr. City Manager.
If I may, Alderwoman Evans, just so you know, as I alluded to earlier, I would like to do a work session in May, which would be May 10th. But in the process of planning for that, John and I already talked, and he was already planning on doing a presentation with regards to those 11 initiatives at that meeting. So, great idea. We already have it in the works, but I'm definitely not opposed to tying that in the contract as long as M A C E D C is also willing to agree to that amendment as a contract party.
I'm looking at a head nod, so I would, I will take that as a formalized yes. Discussion on the motion to amend. Last call from discussion. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yep.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. The amendment passes. Back to the original motion for the M A C E D C professional service agreement. Any discussion on the motion that is amended? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I voted against the extension because I didn't feel that this previous agreement and the relationship, the agreements of the past, and I get it, it's a new organization, it's M A C E D C now. Again, we, we sat up here with VIS and Minot. I'll reference that agreement. It was referenced earlier, and we had it in Alderman's state. We haven't asked for money, but there's no idea how it's going to be spent. They're going to tell us after the fact how it's spent. And they were opposed to it. That's what we're seeing here. And again, we're not seeing those, like Alderman Evans, Alderwoman Evans wants to see is these, these, these benchmarks that could be hit, the LOIS system, maybe perhaps bring a facilitator in to, to assign economic development responsibilities within the city of Minot between all the economic development partners and arms that we have within the city. There are measurables that can be put into this agreement, and I get it, we want to take some time and, and feel each other out and, and, and see where this, this goes. Again, I'm, I'm responsible to the taxpayers. I'm responsible to the individuals that ask me, what do we get from M A, M A C E D C for $328,500? And according to the last update, no offense to anyone, I got, we were in the news for three weeks about the port. We got so many likes on our Facebook page. We're thinking about redoing our website. I get the port is a big thing. It's a big win. It, it needs to happen. It'll be huge for our community, but there's not enough in here for me to support this at this point.
Also remind the council that there is legislation down in Bismarck to the tune of millions of dollars with asking the state to support economic development through the port of North Dakota that very likely has some of those legislators watching. I would ask for support on this because that is an indicative direction of economic development and getting behind support for what is envisioned, not just at the port, but within the organization. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
I've watched this process go through, and I've watched how the two organizations have, have worked hard to inject this new energy. All I can tell you is if we're comparing apples to apples with whether or not we're going to attract a softball tournament or attract a multimillion-dollar business to relocate to Minot, there's a difference. There's an absolute difference in that. It's, if I can use, it, it's embarrassing to go through this process while we have the state looking at us. We're bringing on a new piece of software. We approved it, and now people are going to start looking at Minot. Let's do what Minot's doing. Finally, we're getting people looking at Minot. What's, what's Minot going to do? And we're sitting here debating about economic development, and, and we're, we're on a stage, we're streaming wherever, and city and state officials are watching this, where we can't even get together and say, on a united voice, we're for economic development. This city needs economic development. I can't believe it lasted this long, this debate. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion that is amended, any discussion? Last call. Alderwoman Evans.
So I just want to be clear, a vote against this is not a vote against economic development. I don't like being, you know, held hostage to what Bismarck is doing. I am accountable to the people of Minot, not to the legislators in, in, in Bismarck. And I have a record of supporting economic development, as Alderman Pittner does, and, you know, to bring up some valid questions and concerns about something is not being anti-economic development. To me, it is being responsible to the people who elected me and all of us up here to be good stewards of their money and to use that money for economic development when it makes sense and when it's, you know, transparent and accountable.
Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve as amended to include the 11, 11 items that were discussed within the, Mr. City Manager, what are the 11 items? The initiatives. Thank you. The 11 initiatives that were outlined by the Board of Directors. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
No.
Padagula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Motion is approved. 8.7 is COVID-19-related resolutions. After significant discussion with the department heads, the city manager is recommending that the city council approve the attached resolution, which will terminate the COVID-19 related resolutions effective May 15, 2021. This timeframe gives all staff adequate time to receive the vaccine, the vaccine. All city employees have been informed of this intention. The recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution to terminate the following... The recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution to terminate the following COVID-19-related resolutions effective 12:01 a.m. May 15, 2021. Resolution 3660, the resolution to address the employee absence due to COVID-19 pandemic. Resolution 3670.1, temporary employment policy regarding mass usage. Resolution 3675.2, temporary policy requiring visitors to wear masks while in the city building.
With approval.
Or city buildings. Motion to approve by Alderman Olson, second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Padugula.
Would this be the time for amendment?
This would be the time.
I think, given the reality of the situation, particularly what's happening at the state level, to me, it's an acceptable compromise with, with the mask issue and, you know, both for employees and, and staff. The thing I worry about, though, is cutting off benefits or reducing benefits because of COVID to our staff. And what I would like to propose is that we keep in place those extra benefits. The original resolution was what, in October of last year? That we keep them in place for a full year till this October. The city manager, when I've asked him about it and informed me, I think informed all of us, that something like $5,000 had been spent in the past month on extra benefits. You know, our employees are vital personnel, and I want to make sure that, that none of them has to suffer for being out in the field and incurring any risks. The cost likely would be minimal, but I, I feel more comfortable for giving them that kind of reassurance that if, if they get sick, we're behind them all the way. So I'd, I'd move that amendment to, to the resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion to amend is by Alderman Padugula and seconded by Alderman Evans to keep the benefits piece in place. Discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For any employees that have watched, as I've sat up here for 11 years, I'm typically very pro-employee, and I know that they are the backbone of our organization. But I, I do feel that we have been very generous thus far. There have been a lot of organizations that ended that, that benefit as of December 31st because it was federal funding that was allowing that to occur. And we have been very generous till this point. I, I, I agree with the city manager that all of our employees will have had the opportunity to get the vaccine if they choose to do so. And so unfortunately, I cannot support this, this amendment.
Other discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Alderman Olson. At that point, May 15th, I believe staff will be given adequate time to receive the vaccine if they want, if they choose not to. Again, that's a personal choice and a personal risk that you take with the world we live in. And I don't believe extra benefits should be extended beyond that. I, I agree.
Further discussion on the motion to amend.
Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, that additional leave has been in place since March of 2020.
Thank you for the clarification.
For the timeframe of when you would want it to be extended.
March 2020.
March 16th, I believe it was effective.
Looking at the, the aspect, too, of treatment and, and also testing, I, I won't support the motion to amend. Taking a look at monoclonal options that are out there for, for folks that maybe have higher risk and are able to get quick treatment in that regard, we are doing community testing. The vaccination process is now available to anyone, I believe, 16 and older. I think we have run this to due diligence. I won't support the motion to amend. Further discussion? Alderman Janser.
And just clarification, perhaps, that this, this additional COVID-19-related does not affect the normal sick leave, which typically employees have and are able to use. Is that correct?
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Janser, that is correct. So in essence, what the council did, well, one, when COVID first started, the federal government mandated that all employers with employees less than 500 in number were required to offer emergency paid sick leave. They did offer tax credits to for-profit businesses to compensate for that, but for local governments, there was no compensation for that. It was an unfunded mandate. So you were already mandated to provide 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave for COVID-related events, including childcare, those types of things, under that policy. The city of Minot was extremely generous, going above and beyond that in, in what you've offered, in addition to their already allotted vacation leave and sick leave benefits that you already offer over and above this. And so the request tonight is to cease the eligibility of that. They will still have access to their vacation leave and sick leave as they normally would. I would also include here that I, a couple of weeks ago, I did send an email out to all employees notifying of the intent that this would be on the agenda tonight. I have not received any feedback, either for or against this recommendation at this point. In talking with the management team and the, as the department heads, the feedback seems to be that most employees are happy that there is end in sight, there's light at the end of the tunnel, that this is coming to an end. And that's the most feedback I've had, but I have not heard any expression of concern with ending the additional COVID sick leave on behalf of employees.
Further discussion? Alderman Evans.
Alderman Padugula, would you be open to an amendment, to your amendment, that would keep the policy open for employees who have been vaccinated and fallen that 4% to 5% where the vaccine is not effective?
Ah, yes, yes. Because that would seem to incentivize vaccinations, which I think everybody in public health like me would want. Yes, absolutely. Good idea. Thank you.
Okay, amend your amendment.
You would have to change, change your motion to amend.
Then I'll change my motion to amend.
Does the second agree?
Yes.
There's a motion to amend. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Last, final call. Alderman Pittner.
Again, I'm not a medical doctor. Is it possible to get the flu vaccine, flu vaccination and still get the flu?
Yes.
I, I mean, and that's kind of where I'm coming at here. I mean, we don't provide any additional sick time or vacation leave above and beyond for, for influenza. Why is COVID different? You know, why is COVID, the COVID vaccination, it's not 100% effective, neither is the flu vaccine. I think it's a slippery slope. Again, I won't support the motion to amend.
Further discussion? Final call for discussion on the motion to amend. Please call the roll.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Sitma?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Motion to amend fails. Back to the original motion. Discussion on the motion. Final call for discussion on the motion. Alderman Padugula.
Part of the reason I'm willing to support this motion is that there is light at the end of the tunnel. For the record, I want to say that I am very concerned that we're not out of the woods yet. When the head of the CDC last week said she was, what, terrified or she had the sense of doom, maybe she was being a little over dramatic, but she's probably privy to information that we're not and certainly has technical expertise that I don't. I think as a political compromise, I'm willing to, you know, end the mask policies. But I just, I'm willing to do that on, I guess, a couple of conditions internally, personally for me. The first is that people continue taking this seriously, and that we strongly recommend to staff and visitors that they continue to wear masks for the foreseeable future. I'm willing to let go of the requirement, but I noticed in the, in the proposed letter, or change in policy letter, it said that there, certainly given the freedom, I feel more comfortable personally encouraging very strongly everyone to keep wearing masks and practicing all the other measures, because this isn't just masks that's going to save people. The other reason I'm willing to support this is that it's far enough in the future. We have almost a month, month and a half, where if we do see that proverbial fourth wave, we will be in a position to respond to it. That buys us some time. If we were ending it today or next week, I would not be able to support that. But I'm concerned about the new variants. I'm concerned about the still significant resistance to vaccination on the part of a lot of people. I'm concerned about the fact a lot of people still aren't taking it seriously. And, you know, we're, we're at a cusp here, at a critical point. We have to make sure that enough people get vaccinated before the variants take over. There was something in the paper this morning about how the new variants seem to be much more infectious and much more significant with young children. That worries me because we're trying to keep our kids in school and get them back if they're not. So from a community health perspective, I'm, you know, I very much would encourage everyone to, to practice all the recommended measures. And I'm willing to, you know, accept the reality that, that people are kind of running out of patience. And, and I would be willing to support this, you know, having, again, gone on the record urging people to, to practice all the recommended measures and to take it seriously and asking the administration, and the mayor especially, who's shown a lot of courage in the past about this, more courage, I think frankly, than people at the state level, to, if things start getting bad, to, to immediately react. I, I think we've seen what, what happens if we don't take this seriously. Half a million Americans have died, most of them needlessly. And, you know, I think, I think we're going to be able to beat this. But if, if things start going bad, I think it's critical that, that we, again, be more, be more strict. So I will be voting for this. And I need to explain why.
Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Motion to amend fails. Back to the original motion. Discussion on the motion. Final call for discussion on the motion. Alderman Padugula.
Part of the reason I'm willing to support this motion is that there is light at the end of the tunnel. For the record, I want to say that I am very concerned that we're not out of the woods yet. When the head of the CDC last week said she was, what, terrified or she had the sense of doom, maybe she was being a little over dramatic, but she's probably privy to information that we're not and certainly has technical expertise that I don't. I think as a political compromise, I'm willing to, you know, end the mask policies. But I just, I'm willing to do that on, I guess, a couple of conditions internally, personally for me. The first is that people continue taking this seriously, and that we strongly recommend to staff and visitors that they continue to wear masks for the foreseeable future. I'm willing to let go of the requirement, but I noticed in the, in the proposed letter, or change in policy letter, it said that there, certainly given the freedom, I feel more comfortable personally encouraging very strongly everyone to keep wearing masks and practicing all the other measures, because this isn't just masks that's going to save people. The other reason I'm willing to support this is that it's far enough in the future. We have almost a month, month and a half, where if we do see that proverbial fourth wave, we will be in a position to respond to it. That buys us some time. If we were ending it today or next week, I would not be able to support that. But I'm concerned about the new variants. I'm concerned about the still significant resistance to vaccination on the part of a lot of people. I'm concerned about the fact a lot of people still aren't taking it seriously. And, you know, we're, we're at a cusp here, at a critical point. We have to make sure that enough people get vaccinated before the variants take over. There was something in the paper this morning about how the new variants seem to be much more infectious and much more significant with young children. That worries me because we're trying to keep our kids in school and get them back if they're not. So from a community health perspective, I'm, you know, I very much would encourage everyone to, to practice all the recommended measures. And I'm willing to, you know, accept the reality that, that people are kind of running out of patience. And, and I would be willing to support this, you know, having, again, gone on the record urging people to, to practice all the recommended measures and to take it seriously and asking the administration, and the mayor especially, who's shown a lot of courage in the past about this, more courage, I think frankly, than people at the state level, to, if things start getting bad, to, to immediately react. I, I think we've seen what, what happens if we don't take this seriously. Half a million Americans have died, most of them needlessly. And, you know, I think, I think we're going to be able to beat this. But if, if things start going bad, I think it's critical that, that we, again, be more, be more strict. So I will be voting for this. And I need to explain why.
Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Motion to amend fails. Back to the original motion. Discussion on the motion. Final call for discussion on the motion. Alderman Padugula.
Part of the reason I'm willing to support this motion is that there is light at the end of the tunnel. For the record, I want to say that I am very concerned that we're not out of the woods yet. When the head of the CDC last week said she was, what, terrified or she had the sense of doom, maybe she was being a little over dramatic, but she's probably privy to information that we're not and certainly has technical expertise that I don't. I think as a political compromise, I'm willing to, you know, end the mask policies. But I just, I'm willing to do that on, I guess, a couple of conditions internally, personally for me. The first is that people continue taking this seriously, and that we strongly recommend to staff and visitors that they continue to wear masks for the foreseeable future. I'm willing to let go of the requirement, but I noticed in the, in the proposed letter, or change in policy letter, it said that there, certainly given the freedom, I feel more comfortable personally encouraging very strongly everyone to keep wearing masks and practicing all the other measures, because this isn't just masks that's going to save people. The other reason I'm willing to support this is that it's far enough in the future. We have almost a month, month and a half, where if we do see that proverbial fourth wave, we will be in a position to respond to it. That buys us some time. If we were ending it today or next week, I would not be able to support that. But I'm concerned about the new variants. I'm concerned about the still significant resistance to vaccination on the part of a lot of people. I'm concerned about the fact a lot of people still aren't taking it seriously. And, you know, we're, we're at a cusp here, at a critical point. We have to make sure that enough people get vaccinated before the variants take over. There was something in the paper this morning about how the new variants seem to be much more infectious and much more significant with young children. That worries me because we're trying to keep our kids in school and get them back if they're not. So from a community health perspective, I'm, you know, I very much would encourage everyone to, to practice all the recommended measures. And I'm willing to, you know, accept the reality that, that people are kind of running out of patience. And, and I would be willing to support this, you know, having, again, gone on the record urging people to, to practice all the recommended measures and to take it seriously and asking the administration, and the mayor especially, who's shown a lot of courage in the past about this, more courage, I think frankly, than people at the state level, to, if things start getting bad, to, to immediately react. I, I think we've seen what, what happens if we don't take this seriously. Half a million Americans have died, most of them needlessly. And, you know, I think, I think we're going to be able to beat this. But if, if things start going bad, I think it's critical that, that we, again, be more, be more strict. So I will be voting for this. And I need to explain why.
Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to number nine, personal appearance section of our city council meeting. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda. I would ask that you just say your name and your city of residence for the record.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Christopher Scott. I am a sender at Minot State University. I'm here to advocate in favor of the Minot curbside pickup program that has been on your guys' table for a couple of years. So currently at Minot State, we currently have a recycling program in place that recycles cardboard, aluminum, newspaper. And this is currently being outsourced to Earth Recycling because in February 2020,